Alright, everybody. Welcome to the April meeting of the Lower Southwood Planning Commission. First order of business is review of the minutes from our March meeting. Everyone should have a copy of them. Before I have the modifications, I'll just point out. There was a conversation at the end of that meeting around walkable lead rock and the adoption of that study and all of that. When that came up during the meeting, we said it wasn't on the agenda. We deferred it. We closed the meeting and then that conversation ensued. So that's not part of the minutes. So if anybody was looking for that, I looked for it and then. Talked it through a pattern, which I think that's appropriate for that and excluded from the minutes. So with that, for ISO, any changes, modifications, additions?
I was excused.
What's that?
I was excused.
You were excused. It's always good to have a note. Yes, and I think you, the absentee, per noted at the top of it. So with that, a motion to approve as submitted?
Thank you, Mel.
Nice, thank you. Thank you, Phil. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Scott. So I'm gonna do that as five, oh, and one. Okay, 196 Main Street, Land Development.
Good evening. Put that there for my own reference, but same as the plan that's. On the board. We have seen this a number of times at this point. I'm not going to give much of an introduction unless you want me to, but since that last time we were here. We've got two council consultant reviews and camp view. And I'm just gonna quickly go through then the comments that really bear some distinction. Go from there. I'm gonna start with CKS Michelle's letter dated April 19th, 2024. And if I start with you, I intend on skipping all the comments I would consider to be will wise or something I feel like I can resolve with Michelle's office.
That's not all of them.
Is it ever?
Well, what I would say is if it's, if it's a will comply, sure, we try to keep her from having to do our work for it. So if it's something you're gonna have to resolve, that's not just a technical issue, then let's just talk.
Yeah.
If it's the volume of an 18 inch plant, I couldn't care less.
Right, yeah. What's clarification of the comment or whatever, you know, so under zoning, comment number three. I think we're complying there unless I'm missing something.
You show the dimension to the, you have the, is it living space or?
I see. I know what you're talking about. I just saw it right.
Alright, we'll comply then.
That's a will comply. I think it's clarification of the dimension more than I have to move anything, but I will clarify that. Now, now I see exactly what you're talking. Why I didn't see that before. Number eight, skipping down to number eight. As required by the. RO zoning ordinance, we are providing a. Potential access easement to be shared with the abutting property. There's no need today for that abutting property to share that access. There may be in the future. So we would intend on. Putting together an agreement for the solicitor to do, to review and whoever, whomever else at the township. That is satisfactory to them, but we don't necessarily intend on entering into the agreement with the neighbor at this time. It's just gonna be an agreement that will be in place and that with my experience with those similar things, that's the way it's been done in the past with township. And obviously, the solicitor's office would have to review that as well.
Agreed, and that's what we meant by that, just an agreement with the township. There was something put in place with a, a couple properties close by this one. And some parts of the language were, were not very clear, so I just kinda wanted to drill down on that and make sure we had it correctly done this time.
Okay.
Because I think a couple of ones like on Ruth and stuff, we kind of got it in place and then it's the actual key, and they said okay to defer to that.
Yeah. But now that we're trying to do that, we noticed that maybe we should have been a little more clear about some of the aspects.
We're not approached by anybody. Number nine is with regard to another test point. We've been showing this from the beginning, from the very first sketch plan and hindsight's 2020. I don't know if we should have kept it on there because as we moved forward through the process. It became less of an issue and I think most of the issue focused on the access points to the roadways. I still have it on the plan. I, I guess I would like some input from the planning commission as to whether. That's something that the township desires and access there. It's a little complicated, I think. Because it would have to then continue. Through our site, a considerable distance, unlike this one up here, which is basically just sharing a driveway. I think if the township definitely wanted to see it there, we're not going to necessarily push back on that, but I think it requires maybe some thought. That one right there, yeah.
Don't know that would be good to have a thorough fare going through. The small parking lot for the apartments.
It could be an emergency access potential. You know, if, if the rear of that other site ever gets developed.
There's nothing on the other side of that right now, right?
No.
There's the, the rear of the daycare property and then adjacent to that is the medical practice.
Right.
About bike trail.
I don't know if there's anything planned.
Well, see, if you keep going, I think through two properties, it then, there's a bike trail that's around the.
There is the February 55 community.
Yeah, and that would be like straight line with that.
Make an easement for a bike trail, future bike trail?
So I think we do it as a paper easement and defer.
Paper easement? The paper easement, we could do it as an easement. Like just for pedestrian access only?
Was the thought originally that the property, if it's ever developed. Next door. They're gonna need another access point, so then I'm all coming out on that one road.
That's the trail.
I don't know that we want to bring it there, like the one up near the top that's closer to Main Street, we probably want to bring them out there and that way they would sneak through and go out. I don't know that you'd want to bring them out the back there and then have them go through all those apartment parking lots.
That's gonna bring up the way the trailer.
Yeah, do you want me to bring up an area?
I, I do like the bike trail, because then if you, depending on what happens across the street, you could end up with trails over there. And then you could literally get people from the apartments through the back of that, down across away from the traffic light over into the trail that will be on the.
Yeah, I think that's Ruth Court, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that trail goes right, yeah.
Yeah, there.
Is there public access to that trail? Anybody know?
There is on the other section, so I'm assuming there is on that. The other side of Ruth Court that we're tying into with the trail connection along Pheasant Run.
Okay.
Be easy way to get people up to the shopping area.
Yeah, the, the only challenge in that section is the daycare property. Right there with the building right up close to the road. And, and remember, we're crossing at Ruth and going down. That down Main Street. On the other side.
Let's think about it as a trail.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Let's think about, okay, the trail.
Number 10. It's like all of a sudden every. Number 10 is a loading space for the retail building. I had mentioned when that came up before that intention is to break that building into smaller. To five smaller units. Just because that's where the market is. So we do it just state needing a large loading space generally would be ban deliveries, things like that. There is a space that's 20 feet by 20 feet. Right in front of the dumpster and that would be, 20 feet would be from the crossing. To the driveway. Right there. So what we would plan to do is identify that 20 by 20 foot space as a loading area. That would be 20 foot by 20 feet. Exclusive of the crossing. If a larger vehicle would happen to be there, you know, there would be some room for it, but obviously it would block the pedestrian path at that point.
Is that similar to the sort of the loading point that they have at the wine and spirit shop? It's there, it's like the end unit?
I think theirs. Is designed for larger vehicles because they have, they do have larger vehicles that, that bring their supplies there. So we wouldn't anticipate that large of a vehicle.
If, if there was, would you? Would you have the ability to, to put some restrictions on the timing of deliveries if it was a larger truck? That's, you know, early morning, late at night, that type of thing?
There could be two possibilities, that if the need really arose, like say that building was taken by one single user, all of a sudden they would have the need for a larger loading facility. There is room there to do it. It just didn't seem to make sense to do it. Without us believing the need would be there, that's all.
There is, there are some smaller tenants, but if they're a. A national franchise or a national, you know, Papa John's could be 1200 square feet, but they're bringing in a big truck because they're going, they're just going location to location. Right, and so there are some that'll have a big truck.
You're just suggesting maybe making that space deeper than it currently is. It looks like there's plenty of room to do that.
I'm not necessarily suggesting we do that.
Upfront.
Suggesting we plan, or at least we could demonstrate how loading could be accommodated at that.
But to David's point, even if you end up with a multi-tenant, that doesn't mean you won't have large trucks. How do you get a large truck out of the parking?
Well. I think it would be, other than scheduling, it'd be difficult to do that with a loading space, because then you're. It's a providing tailgate loading, which is significant amount of paving. Probably unnecessary at this point. Even, even if a user would. Come in there that would need that type of a delivery. I think we would seek to control the schedule more than to try to accommodate it like tractor trailer loading space.
The reality is, it's not like, a tenant's not gonna agree to come there and then think about loading. They're gonna look at it and say, if we can't load it, we're not gonna go there. That's, you know, they're gonna look at that in advance if it's possible.
Are you going to one, loading at off hours with the residents that are gonna be there in the townhomes too? Early in the morning? They don't, it doesn't seem like they have to back up if it's early in the morning, they just come in. Go in the parking spaces out front and then go out the other entrance, but. If they're making a lot of noise, the people in the townhomes won't be happy.
Well, we just put the restriction on it, and to Dave's point, they'll, they'll either say they come in with the restriction, or they'll come back and ask you to modify the loading spot, so.
I think the restrictions are the issue. Timing restriction on the loading. Okay. I think we could.
But if they don't like it, they'll work with you, right? But I mean, even the law law, it's 53 in there, see?
Right. Okay.
But let's stay on that for just a second, since you need a loading space for the zoning ordinance, so you will.
Designate that.
That one area in front of the trash. Okay.
Landing or the.
On the record, yeah.
Next item I wanted to talk about is number five under subdivision land development, same page. For the trash enclosures here, so. The trash enclosure area that's behind the bank is going away, sort of a drafting error, kind of midstream, we. Agreed to take that off and it didn't get completely off, so that's not supposed to be there. That's coming off. The trash enclosure that's in the apartments, we're thinking something that's not masonry. Did you bring the picture of? It's something similar to the mainland apartments that are there, which is a PVC fencing, but it's, it's an attractive PVC fencing. The ones that are mainland point are, we think more commercial in appearance are all masonry.
Very pretty, in my opinion. Those stone ones, they're pretty.
The stone ones are what, Scott?
Pretty, very attractive, the ones at the office area.
So I think we'll bring pictures in of what we're thinking. And to me, that's not a critical decision tonight. I just wanted to bring that up, that we are thinking about something different than mainly important.
All made and then. I think they're pretty good looking. They're more residential in character, but. I'm an. Edition.
I, I think the concern is PVC, you know, you kind of get the high gloss finish, or you have to see like, you know, what, what do they look like? And then the wear and tear of them, either they're either open all the time. Or they're getting open and closed all the time, in which case it's the PVC real old, you know, two years in, you've got one half leaning one way. I think that's why we like the.
We'll, we'll continue to have some discussion.
Pictures would be helpful.
Yeah. On the next page, page four, nine and 12, I think kind of go together. And again, I think maybe I think about this a little bit differently than you, Michelle. The parking lot landscaping is required around the full perimeter. I didn't see it as necessarily applying where we have units. Because it doesn't make sense to me to buffer parking from the uses that it serves. Although the ordinance doesn't really distinguish in that, so. We did not intend on putting buffer plantings or plantings to block headlights between the parking spaces. And the units themselves, however. There will be landscaping in there. You know, foundation landscaping. So.
That's what we're gonna do.
So, yeah, you're saying the language is ambiguous. I, I tend to agree with Rick, though probably not in the same spirit in which he's saying it, but. When I think about parking lot landscape buffering. I think of it as. I don't want the rest of the township residents to have to look at that parking lot. What those people that live there look at isn't really, that's their problem. Like, they chose to live there, they live, they bought, they're, they're renting a townhouse, there's a parking spot in front of their unit, they're gonna see it. I'm not trying to landscape buffer them, I'm trying to landscape buffer everybody else looking at it.
That's exactly the way I see it. And, and I do agree with Michelle's comment in that the ordinance doesn't say that. It just says the full perimeter, but I don't think the intent was when it's right next to the unit it's serving. I think it's when it's a big parking area, generally put landscaping around the full perimeter. So to the extent that that would require waiver, that would be one of our waivers and just not in front of. The buildings themselves. There will be other plantings there. I mean, if, you know what Brian and Leo have built, you know, elsewhere, they always landscape them nicely, so there will be plantings, just not gonna be the formal. Perimeter shrub that, that the, that you would have elsewhere, like here, here, here.
Michelle, can we do, is there a way to do the calculation of what is required and then we can have the discussion about where it gets placed?
Yes, because Andy's going to ask for that when he does the approval resolution, what's required anyways. So yes, we can.
Because I would hope coming up Quarry Road, there'd be stanchel buffering. To look at those parking. That, that's when I think landscape buff, when, you know, parking on a landscape buffering, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and I think you have to add some more along that too.
Comment number 19B. That refers to the left property line. So we actually intend on complying with this comment, but I just did want to point out the level of planting that's required. Yeah, so. It's a medium intensity buffer. Pull it down. So we do have the perimeter of parking lot landscape that is basically a parking lot landscape here, farm. Taller trees where there's that dumpster enclosure. Then there's a mix of shade trees, ornamental trees and evergreen trees and shrubs. Remainder of the buffer. So we have everything but the shrubs because we have the shrubs along the parking area and Michelle's comment is, you still need the shrubs. So we're, we're gonna add them, basically, right? We're not gonna look for relief. Along that property line, we just think it's a critical property line. But it will be a lot of planning in that area. Number nine, subdivision land development, nine. I don't really want to hash this out here tonight, but we do want to try to keep the basements. For the two buildings, building three and four.
This is in stormwater. Right, yeah, stormwater, yeah.
So the two buildings at the top of the site, one and two are 10 unit buildings with no basement. Those two buildings are eight unit buildings with basement. The one that, where the arrow is right now is a full walkout across the entire back. And the other one is partially exposed basement there. So I wanna. Kind of work with Michelle, see if we can figure out some way to keep the basements there, some kind of a perimeter drainage system. I, I know what her concerns are with drainage. I think, I think there's maybe some solutions we can talk about there. But it does relate to another comment. I might as well skip to that now.
So did you say they're gonna have walkout basements and they're 30 feet through the basin?
They're walkout basements, base in, basements. In those units, yes.
And your notes also are.
I'm sorry?
Let him walk out and he'll just daylight basement.
Yes, the one that's perpendicular to Quarry Road is partially exposed basement. That's what I would call a daylight basement.
The other ones that have the.
That's the basin?
Yes, right, they're less than 30 feet.
Correct. So the comment 14 on the last page, and you. You asked me on the phone, you know, what are, what is in the basements? And it says, the plan must specify the basement areas of three and four as storage and utilities only.
Just for discussion purposes, because we talked about it on the phone and you thought that that's what it. Was going to be, and I thought I'm putting it in here just so we could talk about it.
So talking about it with Brian and Leo, they do wanna, if, if, if. Pennant wants to be able to put living space down there, not another unit, no, no additional units. And everything that they've showed you with the building renderings, architectural floor plans is accommodated on the first floor. And the second floor of those units. However, if they wanted to add an additional living area or something like that. They wanted to have the ability to do that. I don't think there's any zoning reason they couldn't do that. Because it's not adding a unit and it's not gonna be a kitchen or something like that, but just maybe a living room. The ability to do it. They also intend on having utilities down there as well.
Either were here, that type of thing. And this is a walkout basement, it's a shame not to make a nice family room out of it.
These are rental units, right?
Correct.
So they'll have to come to you to get that filled out, good.
Why, I would think we just want to do it. I think we just want to do that. Not, yeah, yeah. Makes a nicer apartment.
Where else are you gonna put the pool table?
An amenity that a lot of apartments don't have, actually. This could accommodate.
I mean, there's nothing to really.
No, I, in my mind there was, but I would have put a section over next to it. I did not.
Think there is.
But I go back to the stormwater one, I'd be really concerned with those top two on building three. Because of the basement floor elevation and the water elevation in the pond.
That's the unit set closest to Quarry Road, those basement elevations are lower than basin. We'd have to accommodate that.
Can you? I, I understand that it would be an amenity, I think would make it for a premium rental thought, thought of. However, I. I am worried about because they are rental properties, not getting turned into another bedroom. So can we stipulate it as a non-bedroom, non-kitchen? Section? Um, what is now somebody's, you know, okay, now I'm running out my basin for somebody else and all those.
We don't want that either.
Alright, so Rick, if we can just do that.
What's the difference between the basement elevation and the, and the basin?
Basement elevation for the walkouts. Is a foot above the top of burn. Which is more than two feet above the high water level, approximately, something like that.
Okay.
So we go over this spillway before we come into the basement. The other units, grade wise, outside grade wise, same condition, and they're, they're higher outside grade than the basin, but the basement is, you know, dug in below, so we have to. You have to accommodate basement range.
They can use.
I think the only other thing I want to talk about is the patience, kind of continues on that. That is also one of the waivers we were. Contemplating the question, and that is the side slopes of the basin. Both basins are shown to be three to one side slopes and. But neither, particularly the one where the apartments are, it's not a deep basin, it's less than three feet deep. It's 2.8 feet deep, actually, and that's from the top of burn to the floor of the basin. It then has 30 inches of soil, which is porous, that's part of the design, but. The MRC design, it's called, is when you have sites with limited infiltration ability, which is most of Montgomery County, so. They're being used more in. They're being used more and more, but the emphasis is on making the bottoms as large as possible. Um, that's what we've done with both of these. Um, and in order to accommodate that, we've made them also shallower. But the slopes are three to one, and usually the way I think about it is if it's known by a homeowner. Four to one is probably the maximum, it's commercially known, which this would be. Three to one is perfectly acceptable. I had slopes at my house that are steeper than three to one and. I know them without any, without any issue. Um, you know, the only concern that we're going to try to uh. Address is protecting those basins, particularly the one that backs up to the apartment units. We've discussed maybe it, there's already a fair amount of landscaping in those areas, but maybe a combination of landscaping, maybe. Uh, some other method to uh just keep people out of that area, we obviously wouldn't want people in in the basin area either. Site has a significant amount of grade between quarry road and somebody's town pike, so that kind of projects. Uh across the site too, that affects. More of the basin on the right, but that one's not near any residence.
So is the design of the basin um, so at the height of a storm event, is it? Ponding or is it sticking immediately? Cause if you're creating a pond thirty feet from the back doors of these buildings, a little kid could get out there. And end up in the pond. So we can't have that.
Well, it could be fenced, it could be uh protected in some way.
Cause I would think in that, in that situation, we'd be acting as a swimming pool. In terms of safety.
Yeah, I mean, we could um. That's one of the things we were thinking about, protecting it with a fence as well along those units, so that it's clearly delineated also.
I mean, that's not attractive, but that's.
It would not be a chain link fence, we would do an attractive fence. Uh, that is basically, I think, everything I wanted to talk about in Michelle's letter.
Staying on the side slopes, the the other basin looks like you're getting steeper than three to one. I might be just grading perception, but make sure you have enough room there to go three to one if. The planning commission is gonna recommend that waiver.
In the right basin?
Yes, in the basin on the right, up on that top left corner.
Okay.
Yeah, in there.
And I I don't believe it is, but I'll double check it. There's some determining, and the grading on that basin, since we got rid of the uh trash area. It's actually gonna be improved slightly to uh adjacent to the drive.
So you'll you'll think about fence for the.
Um, Stephanie's letter, um. It's really not much that I want to talk about, um. Question, Julia?
I'm, I'm looking through that letter and I wasn't clear on. I was looking for the. What percentage change gonna be in the graph? There were different numbers given in the letter.
In the, I'm sorry, in the what?
Stephanie's letter, Stephanie's on one, she can answer.
Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, I couldn't pull out of the the document. Percentage change in the amount of traffic to be like at the peak hours and on Saturday peak hours.
So in the peak hour, they actually are showing uh peak hour in the morning, AM weekday peak hour, there's. Um, approximately eighty-two new trips um during the peak hour. A hundred and twenty-four in the weekday PM peak hour and a hundred and six in the Saturday midday peak hour. Um, but levels of service are still acceptable and within um the. Requirement for increased seconds of delay within the levels of service, so. We really didn't have um. Too many comments, you know, with regard to the traffic analysis itself, there are some. There are some items just relative to the timing of the signals and the system that's out there and making sure that all of those details are aligned. You know, but we were, we were in pretty good agreement with the information that was provided in this study. I will say, one of our comments, which is number, sorry, I'm flipping through. Number ten, uh we did note that there was um in the queues, um they do exceed the available storage length. In one or more of the peak hours, um however. The northbound left turn lane queue on quarry is two oh one, and if you recall that left turn lane is striped as an exclusive left. And then it goes right into a center left, um. You know, so there's room for that stacking when it's needed, uh but remember, we I we kind of went through this. Fairly, fairly good detail um several months back, um. We, the uh the access is certainly located at the location that it needs to be for lines of sight and whatnot. Um, and then the right turn queue. Uh, I believe it needs to be a hundred and thirty-seven feet accommodated. And I believe they're providing that, I think we just need some clarity with the labeling and dimensioning on the plan.
And uh I highlighted comment twenty-one, Stephanie as well. Um, cause I don't think you were saying we didn't meet that requirement, I think you're saying you would want it labeled, um that's the radius of quarry road.
Yeah, I realized the attached markup wasn't to the le- in the letter, I don't believe that I sent out, but I can send that over. Um, I think your your radius on the geometry is a little tight. In the center line, um. But we can certainly talk, I I think it's perfectly doable, it's not going to change your curb line, it's just. Essentially making sure that that radius where you're start try tying into the existing double yellow and coming in along your site front edge. That you meet the three hundred and forty foot. Geometry, and I think what it will do is um flatten it just a little bit.
I checked the radius, we actually exceed that, but. You know, if you would like it bigger, I I saw your markup, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue anyway to do what you're asking, but um.
Maybe we just need to have it labeled on the plan, more geometry shown to give us that indication, um but it didn't. It didn't quite appear like it was that to us, but. If you can label that stuff, give us the geometry, that would be helpful.
The the driveway that goes out on the main street, that's right in, right out?
Right in, right out, left in.
Yes.
Cause there's a left turn lane available there. On Sunday town.
Island, the.
Yes.
Forests right only out.
Uh, that's correct, that will be a concrete, Stephanie had a comment about shifting it back four feet, which we agree with. So. And then you have, there's minimum area requirements for islands, so. Uh, we'll address that, but uh she did comment.
Then keep in mind that will still be going to pend out for their review as well for any highway occupancy permit.
But they can't overrule that, can they? I mean, if we say we want it to be right now. I can't imagine they would approximately.
I don't think that they will, I mean, in, they could, they could, they could overrule that, but I don't think that they will.
I don't think they would read. And the attachment, I don't. I don't think that's gonna be a concern. Um, the sidewalk connections, the county had brought this up too, uh my only comment is it may make more sense to connect. So we already have a a connection at um the intersection of quarry and Sunday Town Pike to our internal sidewalk network. Um, and I think it may make sense to put the next connection at the driveway. Um, for two reasons, it spreads that, spreads it more apart. There's already access to the bank from the corner. And this would give more access to the other retail building and the other side of the sidewalk network.
Yeah, I think we looked at both locations, um I think if you want to present it at the driveway, we could certainly.
But there's also, we turned it up great in the middle of the site too, there's grave separation, so maybe even difficult to do it. So we're not necessarily disagreeing with the additional connection, I would. I think it makes sense for two reasons to move it down to the driveway.
I think the only thing is if it was in the driveway, and I don't think you can see my mouse, but if it was as you're coming in and getting into those first parking areas, you just wanna. Enough visibility for people, you know, coming in, you can that left and right in, that they can. They can see.
So, any questions from the.
Is there anywhere that shows what you've decided on the emergency access? Um, we have not decided what's what's material to use, because you made a comment, you'd like to see it paved.
Right.
And we're not opposed to something for, uh, right, not grass. We're not opposed to paving it, the the emergency access with a bollard. Yeah, so that, you know, cars can't get in there.
Did I give you the bollard that they like to use? Did I send you that?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll say, give you that detail.
Well, if we make the other easement part of the trail, and then. The accident at the other end, I've got the concept, it would be taking the across the back of that and hopefully tie it across the street.
Right.
Don't you think that? Think we pave in, just make a part of the.
I'm sorry, I.
Remember we talked about, we'll we'll make a trail at the.
Right.
Connection point and your emergency access straight opposite that, so we pave that and. You know.
Straight through uh section, yeah.
So do you want that trail, a trail down in that easement area, or do you just want an easement for future trail?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we pave the emergency access now and we have the easement for the future.
Okay.
Trail.
Okay.
Cause I mean, it could be years because of the development, you know, we don't even know.
I don't know, I. Obviously you're too far along with the development of this, but. It's not generally gonna get to put a trail in the middle of the park.
No, but I mean, I think. We're trying to get trails, there was a trail connection study that we've got going on, and given the fact that there's the one at the apartment, it's not far away, I don't know that. I I don't know that we want to necessarily take them up to the road, there's the sidewalk there for pedestrians, but for bikes and anything like that. It's a minor, you know, apartment, I. I I get your point, but I don't I don't know that it would be the worst thing in the world to be able to connect those people and get them over to what could be a park or open space.
Makes sense to connect there, just that taking a trail down the middle of the parking lot.
Backside, it'd be nice to actually just have, you know, those units were pulled forward, you've got a trailer goes behind along the property line and out there, but. Um, Claire, anything from the county?
I was just thinking really quickly about the trail, if we're to do that, I would. In the, in a residential parking lot, it would be the worst thing to have that connection going through at short distance, but to make sure it's really visible. Um, so everyone's alert to the fact that people may be using it as a, as a recreational. Um, but in terms of our review letter, if everything else. Um. Don't think that I have a whole lot to add here, um we. That string connectivity, um. And similar to the comment I just made about the bike championship. But in terms of the crossing of the. The driveway on quarry road, just to make sure that the passageway is very visible, um it's a very wide distance. Those are my comments. And reiterating the comment again about having the connections along the the access points, which you did. reported of that. And then in terms of the, I know this is much of the last thing, mission meeting, but we just wanted to. To. Mention the parking spaces that are at the entry. Off of Sunny Town Road that. Could potentially be a concept for people who are entering in. Be forced to put in the, the traffic engineer to.
I think you got rid of one or two, there's still one more I'd like to see.
We got rid of three. Hey, maybe it was four, I I don't remember, three or four, uh however, we did go down to the.
You are, however, above and have been required for residential.
We are. Pretty far from that. Uh, what we thought though is potentially signing s- spaces uh which stay out for. So that I. You know, by the general public, and it kind of makes sense, because they're on the side of the building where there's no entrance as well.
Not suggesting buffering between the units and the spaces in front, but to consider adding another planting island to break up the. The long stretch. You, the, it's not, it is eating the requirements. Um, but it would be. Practice to add shade tree or to in that stretch in front of the. The, yeah, the units are at the bottom of.
There is uh two islands there that we will be adding trees, that was a a comment of Michelle's as well.
So to Claire's point, is there just one, just one island along the bottom row there?
Correct. One there is the wider one. These buildings here. Then there's uh an island. The left side of the plan as well.
Yeah, I think that's something to think about, I I. I get the county's point about breaking that up, at the same time. You know, we always didn't worry about, okay, what happens on holidays, is there enough parking? The landscape islands just become visible hazards sometimes, but. That's something to think about.
Alright. Any other questions or comments?
Do you, I I have one, the, you saw a comment about the uh additional fire hydrants, have you talked to North Penn? Or looked at what the fire department wants in regard to hydrants? I could tell by your face.
I had a meeting last night. So. Uh, however, the the review letter referred to comments by North Penn Water with Arnie. Yeah, they sent out an email.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they they have seen it.
Yes.
I just didn't personally.
Yeah, okay.
Cause I think they agreed with what.
They have less hydrants than what you guys.
Oh, they did, I thought the one thing said, and then where the bar company was like as well, or?
My, I said that on my letter, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I did want to bring up one other thing, and that is lighting, um. We are intending to match the this, the feature, the fixtures that are across the street at Mainland Point. Within the parking. Uh, in other words, there's bronze colored fixtures. Uh, that were placed for the Taco Bell, for the. Uh, the paving for the Arby's and the Abi's. Also the office building, that's the fixture we're intending to use here, but meet the height requirements of the R O district. Uh, we are not intending on lighting the existing roadways. Like Mainland Point is lit up. So I'm assuming nobody's expecting us to light quarry road, I I don't necessarily think that's appropriate here, but um. I just wanted to get that out on the table so that. We could get any feedback if there isn't.
Maybe something at the entrances we want to look at?
Right.
Okay.
Like the entrances, right, but not not the whole length of the road.
I agree.
Like me.
So so. I appreciate you bringing it up, but you made me sorry you did, um. So Mainland Point, I like the look of the fixtures. I think it is entirely too bright. And. As we step across the street, I personally would really like to see us deescalate the intensity of the lighting on this track. Particularly as you move into the residential section of this.
We agree with that, we don't intend on lighting. Particularly outside, anywhere close. Near nor does it need it either, I mean, it does need adequate lighting for security. Things like that, but it's it's a different level. Across the street, so.
And and I understand as we get closer to. Main Street, there will be a a certain lighting scheme because of the commercial nature of that, as we work our way into the residential, we're then working our way towards other residents. We really have to deescalate.
Now, I agree a hundred percent. Uh, the bank obviously has some security concerns of of over and above most uses, they're they want to do their own lighting, so. We're going to provide what they give us, uh, they're going to use the same fixture, but. You know, we'll see what they come back with in terms of what.
So this will be the cutoff type fixture like that, we have a Taco Bell. And a Wawa.
Well, you have cutoff, but do you know their medium? Level lighting, LED lights?
The.
Only LED.
Yeah, LED, but there's um. Low, medium, and high, and I'm wondering what they are.
The the I think the lighting level over there is is it's a pretty high level. It's a different, I mean, Wawa is so much activity there, really do have to light that. So I mean, there's so much traffic in and out, so. Not going to be the same.
We'll look at it, we'll. Perk will look at.
There'll be a lighting plan or something.
Yes.
Um, what I would like to do.
I I got a quickie for you.
Okay.
There the there there is on on the mainland point, there is lights um along the sidewalk. On Sunny Town Pike. I assume. That when we. Whoever builds on the other side next to Hennings will also have a sidewalk and lights on it. So we're starting a pattern of lighting up the sidewalk along Sunny Town Pike. Would it be appropriate for the sidewalk? Along Sunny Town Pike in this development to also have? Lights similar to what? Mainland Point has.
Let's let's look.
Is that our intent?
Sorry, Scott, let's look at the illumination that they get on the lights that they're proposing and if uh. What the foot candles are on the sidewalk. When they submit that.
Okay. Okay. I I personally like, I I mean, I I I know what you're saying about it being very bright at Mainland Point. I do like the sidewalk being lit up, though, it doesn't have to be that bright, but I do I do appreciate that. And if we think that is a main. Pedestrian corridor along a retail area of Sunny Town Pike. I would appreciate lights along the sidewalk, doesn't have to be as bright as Mainland Point, but I like that idea.
Discuss that.
Let's look and see what it looks like, yeah.
Yep.
We uh would like to come back next month, not with a revised plan, but um. Some additional information about the basin, so we can kind of. Address that issue, how we're going to protect it, for example, uh, and a detail on the fence. And also a list of waivers. Just for further discussion, because I think we have enough information and feedback that I can create that. Um, does that sound reasonable?
There's a solution next month. Oh, wow, he is well past the.
We're not going to submit a revised plan, just just the list of waivers. And show you what we're thinking for the basin. I have two items already on the agenda. Depending on time, I don't have an issue with.
Yeah, as long as they're not asking us to turn around edits to a plan, but just providing additional information to the plan already submitted.
No, I think the feedback we got tonight is useful in in doing that. But yeah, you know, not asking you for any action on those waivers, just want to lay them out and we can. Make sure there's no further discussion.
All right, I think that's. Anybody from the public have a question?
All right, question. Name name an address, please. Having done it for each other, Brian. Just a question, you travel west on Sunny Town. Fire in Florida, you're gonna have a left turn into this development, is that correct?
That's the proposal, yeah.
And you're gonna have a left turn in Florida as well, correct, what is the distance between those points? Um, about.
Plus feet.
Same thought we put, you know, people trying to make left turns into two turns, but the same.
There's lanes available, so there's a dedicated left turn lane. At quarry road are ready, and that lane continues into center turn lane, so that you're not blind, is that wrong? And that center lane. Dedicated left, so.
Do that to. Right.
I don't. Obviously, we're turning in Florida. No alternative. I'm not turning.
In my mind, it seems close as well, the good news is. We have a traffic engineer and Pendot will be all over this, so like if it isn't too close of a proximity, Pendot just won't allow it.
Fire number eight hundred feet between two arteries like that? State? Not for that, not.
Yeah, you're you're thinking of the one thirteen conversation we have with the.
Very much so.
Um, and then just wanted to comment on the Mr. Hughes question to you about. These basements being uh. Fire that they never finished and never using as bedroom. How would that be a force? The unit that's a two bedroom, suddenly becoming a three bedroom. The residences, these units.
It's increased enforced through. The zoning department and the building permit process, like like any. Say that about any any house in the town, should somebody wants to do something in violation of the ordinance, not going to appropriate permits. It's hard to know that that stuff. Where I.
No, I understand that the developers are going to make them as empty family room type. Rec room type units, what's to prevent the tenant from those living in that unit suddenly turning it into a bedroom because it is a walkout. Having been in hundreds of homes in the Bay County area, I've seen atrocious bedrooms in basements with no. Way that people even know they're there unless.
And they they do not allow any.
Yeah, they don't know.
No, I understand they don't own. Lock a mattress in a basement in a matter of minutes.
But they they can put. They can put a mattress to stand there, but in our lease, we have required maximum. So, no. So that's a good thing, they either are. Do them.
Right.
And we have, we do inspections every year. Yeah, we do, we've done that. Yeah. But people can pay them out, pay them better. So.
So there would be a limit of the number of residents that would stay in these rooms?
That's correct.
And that would be enforced by which guys?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Lori Young, PETA, fourth entity, Whiteford Circle. And uh, the follow up to Alan's comment. Um, Richard, what's the distance between the two entrances or the road in the entrance?
On Sunny Town Pike?
Yes.
Or Main Street, I think in that one region, I always call it Sunny Town Pike. Um. Okay. It's probably about two hundred and six.
Okay, so I I was the only other planning mission meeting I went to was regarding Durstine Farm. And I guess with with Alan's comment, there was. I thought a township requirement of the eight hundred feet in roadways. Or state, and I'm just looking at at numbers, if if I remember correctly. The Durstine Farm had about thirty six or less townhouses. And this property has, what, twenty nine apartments plus five retail buildings?
It has thirty six apartments and two.
And two retail buildings. So we've got commercial property and residential. Uh, Durstine, I believe, was two hundred and thirty six feet, and they would need to get the variance because eight hundred feet was the requirement. How does this differ then? Can you tell me why this is not an eight hundred foot requirement between entries and?
So so that's about, that's the distance between rooms and the but as you, I'm sure as you drive up and down Sunny Town Pike, you'll recognize the distance between driveways is legislated very differently, this is designated as a. You know, quarry is a road and this is the driveway taking access to the commercial, you go up and down Sunny Town Pike, I mean, prior to driveways and now commercial properties every. Hundred and twenty five feet, I guess, in some sections of the village commercial.
For areas that have large apartment complexes, do you think that's also very closely spaced?
Yeah, I mean, even probably down this road from here, there's probably driveways in and out of those, uh, there's the Grandview Hospital, there's the daycare, and then there's the apartment, they're they're probably less, much less than eight hundred feet apart.
And so when you get to new developments, you look at, they they do traffic studies for all of them.
Every single one, there's a huge document that goes on this that Stephanie was referencing that looks at. Traffic times, traffic patterns, percentage distribution, proximity, access points. It's it's a pretty detailed process they have to go. And then they have to submit it to Pendot because Route sixty three is a state road. As was one thirteen, if you remember that conversation.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. It it, um, also question. With. The uh wetlands area up there. And I was surprised when I was with the print the CEDAN. Are you able to do all the construction and modifications and the grading of the basins? Without impacting that wetland, and can you just maybe summarize the requirements for that?
So it's it's really artificial in my mind, uh, because there's a. Great weird structure, a dam of sorts that was built along quarry road. And that spills into a structure over if it was under quarry road. So the reason there's an impairment there is because of that structure. So our plan is to remove the structure, widen the road, put curb and sidewalk in, drainage, better drainage than is there today. Uh. And we will require. And just do it, we have to submit those appropriations to the state. Um, I don't believe it's going to be a difficult permit to get, to be honest, uh, sort of a general permit, so it meets certain requirements in terms of we're not really impacting any more than a quarter acre. Uh, wetlands, and and some other criteria. Only we can demonstrate that's a phase that.
Okay, um, so you're saying we love your impacting left for the quarter acre of the wetlands? Or the wetland is a quarter acre now?
Uh, it's probably less than that, true.
But are you gonna allow that to be in?
Which bunches remains, yeah, so we do intend on widening the road, the higher length of the frontage, which actually is a township requirement. So there is going to be some impact just because of that. It's you, also actually is. Why widen the road, put curving in and storm sewer. So the impact is really big that. Basically, it isn't. It's outstanding. So we're not getting rid of the drainage, it's still going to be.
Back to the natural mechanics out there, and I guess the second question, is that the area where the road floods now? That.
It's poor drainage today.
I mean, last month, I heard some other residents talk about the roads already flooded, but concerns about that, and I just wonder how this will. Impact there too.
It's it's flooding because it's really a a poor drainage situation, uh, that will look only correct. Drainage will be improved overall. After our work is done, we're gonna. Uh, replace the storm sewer piping that runs through there, widen the road, put curving in, all of that's going to improve the drainage, right now. There's really no controls and it's. Great situation.
That's correct, I think that's the next step, it'll be disturbing. All this direction. And all the rating, particularly for the basin with the. The three to one or the four to one low frequency.
Uh, that really doesn't have any impact um on that, um. In fact, it helps us stay away from it if anything. Um, I mean, obviously, any development is going to have some impact. I think every house in the township is complaining that they've destroyed some level of evidence, so.
But a wetland, I thought wetlands were.
Wetland.
That whole and protected. Am I incorrect with that?
Um, you are allowed to disturb wetlands under certain criteria, that's what we propose. Only under the permits that that's allowed, we couldn't get that permanent, wouldn't be able to widen the road, that's that would be the impact. I think everyone's in agreement that that's probably, in this case. Positive aspects of the plan is brutal road, brutal drainage.
Okay, Betty, final question.
Betty, Betty, uh, for you, Reed Chadwick, um. I know you had something to say about. Not bringing up the past, but the other type of wetland we had over at the Durstine. And the more I read upon it, I did think that it's protected. If we didn't widen the road, we wouldn't. You know, we'd have a major impact on. The community with all this construction that we don't need, um, but basically, if we didn't. Interrupt the wetland, you know, then we wouldn't have. The construction and we wouldn't have the in the the widening of the road, so we need, I don't know, which comes first.
That road is improved today.
It does, but. Only because of Super Wawa. That proven, never needed improving before. Very small residential farm road, never needed improving.
It's a question.
Everybody says the sugar cut, just saying, a little bit of place, but any.
It's a, what's the question?
Um. My question is, um. Why wouldn't the wetland be precedent over? President? Over what we need to have?
You're right in that, so state will step in, though there's. Waterways of the Commonwealth, so if it was designated as one of that, they would have to deal with it, on the Durstine Farm, we were pushing back because the developer there was refusing to acknowledge that it was a wetland, we're all like.
Right.
No, that is a wetland, trust us every time it rains, so in that case, we were actually. Pushing back on the developer, saying, no, you need to identify it as wetlands, which therefore will make you have to go through the permitting process and state mandates, so. It was actually the opposite, where we were forcing them to recognize the wetlands, these guys have recognized it, so they'll go through a permitting process, which will require how they can modify that site. Then they'll have to build the basins to a specification that the engineers will determine, then they'll have to file a B M P, a basic management plan, of how will that be maintained over time? So most of this is regulated by the state, they 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 won't get to decide how they want to address that wet.
Right, I spoke to the EPA and the Department of Waterways and. Chevans, you know, with all the permits and everything, I just thought somewhere along the line. That could have been the first. Step. In other words, a permit to even come in where there is a wetland at all, to begin with, before we.
Yeah, disturb it until they've got all the permits in place, so yeah, that's that's the process.
Meaning it affects the widening of the road, that that's this whole. That.
Usually a developer has to find out whether they can develop the site relative to the wetlands, if they can, then you deal with the road issue.
And one other comment. This is going to be a nightmare with traffic, it's going to be a nightmare. With people at rush hour. I'm going towards sixty three, towards. Super Wawa, and I had a. Box van almost running off the road, trying to merge into the the two lanes into the one lead and. I'll tell you what. People get very angry in that whole intersection area. And the delay with the light, and then you have more people. And the delay with the light, and then you have more people turning, and then you have more people. With the residents. No matter how many tricks you're talking about. I I just think it's gonna be a nightmare, I just wanted to put that on record again, but it it will be. No matter what we do. We don't need. This, so I have a feeling it's it's gonna come after this.
Yeah, um, follow up of Lori Young, Shida, four seventy, Whiteford Circle. Um, I had gone to the, get the board's supervisory meeting, Richard, where you presented this plan. And did I understand correctly, I I think in that meeting you called it something like a natural drainage. Or in in a culvert, you didn't use the word culvert.
Feature. I called it a drainage feature, I hope.
Feature. And that's where the wetlands, did you connect, is that, did I understand that you won't be. Changing that natural. Or you would not be disrupting all of it, all the trucks and the grading and oil movement, is that correct?
The the pond or. Description, what's there, isn't natural. It's created, it's a playbill, you know, stone wall. So it's not a natural feature.
But it's a environmental, environmentally protected.
I'm not even sure it is that, we will. Apply for the permits, DDP. Tends to not even regulate wetlands that were created as part of that stormwater man. But they may say, it's not, we're not even gonna regulate, that's a possibility. Worst case, we believe is that they would have to issue a permit. But we're not, and this is in response partly to the comments we were speaking to, we're not just filling in the whole thing. Pretending it doesn't exist, we're maintaining the drainage patterns today. As they've always suggested, there's an intention basin on the site above us, the daycare site. Uh, basically, exactly where that feature is, that basin outlets onto our property. So that's, we're gonna allow that to continue to drain to the site, Quarry Road, then to the Alabac Farm across the street, so we're not interrupting. What we're really doing is taking away an artificial structure that was built. Under the wind. Providing better drainage there. If the road improvement project was done without this project, it would still be the same level of it. It's really the road. So.
Couldn't the road widening be across the road on the other side?
Uh, it wouldn't uh be in adequate alignment. As to connect point A, point B, where Quarry Road is, at Sunny Town Pike, and across the street, and then. The other side as well.
So I'm gonna move us along, so let me just make sure I've got the notes from today. So you're you're gonna put a note that the basements cannot be used as a bedroom. You're gonna bring us back representations of what the fence around the basement basin would look like. Uh, we'll add easement and we'll pave the emergency access.
Correct.
Anything else? And you'll come back next month, not with modifications to the plan, with the basin, the waivers and the fence. That's cancer. All right, you're gonna take.
I I noticed that, but we're gonna strike that for a little.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Village Commercial, Claire.
Uh, there were a couple of tweets from the last planning commission meeting. Which I I can I can go into, I'm sorry, I don't know if that. Um, with this latest draft, we can send it, go with empty and make. You know, changes and then the the latest draft was sent to. Me for their review. Because you guys have been a little bit late. We are expecting to have. If we need to make any changes before the May.
So are you looking at the, that date in April, or are you looking at the worst of posting red line? I I have two documents, one's a summary memo dated April twenty-second, is that what you're referring to? Okay.
Yes, that's the memo that summarizes the. The extent of the edits that were made. It doesn't just go over the edits since the last meeting. The the edits that were made since the last meeting. Specifically to add the front end occupation calculation. That's on page two. And then after Michelle pointed out rightly that there was some inconsistency with the language. I tweaked it, so we we made the equation. Equal the language, so now it states that. Um, the front of documentation. Essentially is the the building width divided by the width of the lot, if all the other stuff subtracted.
So I I I was looking at B divided by, and we parentheses, I felt like I was back in my algebra class in high school. The only thing that I.
I tried to limit, I I took out the equations earlier on for the density requirement, I I don't want to put them back in there, but it might be helpful. To have an explanation there.
I'm clear on, we're trying to, we're trying to calculate a percentage, right? The building width divided by the wider thing to say, okay, what percentage of coverage do we have? In most cases, won't this sidewalk and pedestrian pathways, S, in your calculation? Equal the total width of the lot? I'm I'm thinking you're double counting because you've got, well, you're gonna have W, total width of the lot, minus a bunch of stuff. One of the things will be the sidewalk and pedestrian pathway. In most cases, the sidewalk runs the total width of lot.
Chance there might be a path that crosses, that goes for particular to it, rather than. So if there is a path that's going meeting of two building, that would interfere with that, that would be.
Yeah.
The same way a driveway.
You might just want to think about how you'd specify that, or or, you know, just call pedestrian pathway and eliminate the sidewalk, because I'm just thinking about. In most Village Commercial, there's gonna be a sidewalk, one of the total width, and so when you populate your variables, we're gonna get to one.
Any other concerns with that equation that was added? Shown in red on page six of the draft district. The market. The the other change that was made. Um, was to the. The disc, uh, that was for. In relation to parking lot screening, just trying to make sure. Um, so I can't imagine, I'll still flip through it later, what's it be? So there was an issue with the the distance that parking lots would have to be set back from the street when they're screened. In the case that they're not able to be located behind the building. Um, so we just widened that distance, so it would be now set back twenty-five feet, that would accommodate the sidewalk. And any land state coverage that's included in that. I can't find my edits.
Page ten, I think. Bottom on page ten.
Thank you, yes, I even need a little comment to myself, yes. Thank you. Bottom of page ten, when a parking lot has street frontage, the parking lot shall meet the following requirements. All parking lots shall be set back, and then the twenty-five feet, that was increased from ten feet. Inclusive of required sidewalk or trail or any.
Parking lot set back twenty-five feet, within the twenty-five feet, you can have a trailer, it's on.
Yes, yeah. Okay, those were the, those were the two changes that um were covered at the last planning mission meeting. Um, everything else I. Presented, there was no initial feedback on. If it's planning commission would would like me to run through the overarching summary, I can do that. Or we can wait until we have the comments back from Michelle. And I'm leaning towards that because I wanna make sure that we have all their feedback before I.
I think have their feedback, hopefully Don will be here, we'll go through once and. Get the singer to the finish line, Claire.
Good.
Yeah, all right. Anything else that we're gonna be working? Scott, anything on your end?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Favor? Thanks, everybody.
See you, guys. Thank you. Have a good night.
Safe travels.
Have a good night.
Thank you.